Right, Council, I'll go ahead and call it May eighteenth meeting to order at six P M. And before we call the roll, I'll ask Stephanie to read us our virtual ground rules for meeting.
All right, please make sure the name shown at the bottom of your video view is the name you would like the mayor to use. You can change this by right clicking on the three dots in the upper corner of your video view and clicking rename. If you have an unstable internet connection, please also connect through the phone. That will allow you to continue to participate even if you lose internet connection. If you call in after you've joined on video, click the arrow between mute and video and there is a button for switch to phone audio. Clicking this button provides a participant I D. Please call in with that I D as then your phone is associated with your video. We will mute everyone until a designated comment period. When the chair asks for the public comments, if you raise your virtual hand, he will call on you and you will be unmuted. To virtually raise your hand, click on participants and then click on raise hand. If you are participating by phone only, press asterisk nine to raise your hand. All right, roll call. Right, Gary?
Here.
Richard Bloom?
He's here.
Not when you did, there we go.
Here.
Fred Brink?
Here.
Gail Brown?
Here.
Rich Field?
Here.
David Fettow?
Here.
Kate Moran?
Here, present.
John Smart.
And I will go ahead and lead us in the pledge allegiance and give Stephanie an opportunity to mute everyone. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Council, the agenda is before you this evening. And do I have a motion to approve this agenda as presented?
I move to approve the agenda as presented, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Nay like sign, opposed like sign, excuse me. Motion carried. Thank you, Council. And presentations this evening, we have our finance director, Erin Gwen, is going to present her first quarter financial report. Erin.
Thank you, Mayor Gary. Good evening, Council. Let me get my shared screen going. Can you guys see that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So today I'm presenting to you the first quarter of two thousand and twenty-one financial report. Um, let's see. It's not moving for me. No, okay, hang on. Let's see if this works. Okay, so first I'm going to spend a few minutes rever- reviewing the health of the economy and how it's relating to West Richland, then we'll review the general funds, followed by the other funds. This is being kind of slow, so hang with me. Okay, here's a chart displaying unemployment history, kind of reviewed this in the previous one of these I've done. This chart's pretty fascinating, is really mapping out the unemployment levels during the pandemic. You can see how the recovery is happening. Let me see. So March of two thousand and twenty, so right here, same kind of the last week of March of two thousand and twenty. We were at four hundred and seventy-five thousand, four hundred and twelve total unemployment claims. So if you add those two together, the continued and the new claims, that's where we were. If we fast forward a year to this year, we're at the end here, so we're at a hundred and two thousand, nine hundred and seventy-seven. So more than a seventy-five percent reduction, which you can see that we're on our way recovering. If we go back and we look at the pre-COVID numbers, it's that square, we kind of go by the first week of March, where our total claims were sixty-two thousand, six hundred and fifty-three. So we're still sixty-four percent higher than when we were pre-COVID, but we are looking much better than we were. And I think this graph accurately is a great display of that information. So this slide is some interesting economic indicators and compares Benton County with all of Washington counties. This looks at the percentage change over the last twelve months, so this is a year-over-comparison. If you were to pull it up today, you'd probably see a slight change, which this graph is found on the Washington State Department of Commerce and is their economic recovery dashboard, so it's pretty interesting to look at. The first portion, which we already kind of talked about, was that employment. Yeah, there are some expected numbers regarding the unemployment rate, nothing shocking there. The positive in this is the job postings, so if you look at all of Washington, job postings are actually up significantly, which is going to be the pathway to getting that employment rate back up. Retail sales in Benton County, so for the first quarter was up fifteen percent and it was actually up across Washington. And you'll, we'll see this later on in the presentation, how it, West Richland fared just as well. Down here in the support programs, still significant support being given and the basic food and then the T A N F is the temporary assistance for needy families. So still more dependent on that source of aid for some of those lower income people, maybe, and we really want to watch those numbers and see that they drop. This consumer behavior, the bottom numbers here, it is kind of interesting on the credit card spending, says it's up sixteen percent. That's probably a couple different things going on there. Due to the pandemic, more and more sales are being online, people are using their credit cards more. A lot of cat stores are discouraging the use of cash, so this could be one. In the past, historically, credit card spending has been a an indicator of consumer confidence. I don't think that we could base that at this time on that. The other one is if people are really struggling paying their bills and they're putting it on credit cards, it's something to watch going forward. So how does this translate into West Richland? One of the specific areas that we're able to see directly impact is our utility customers. We were hovering right around the twenty-five thousand total past due mark, it's getting elevated now. So kind of back up a little bit, so the utility billing team, every month, even though we still are not shutting off water, we still prepare as if we were shutting off water to see where we would be at, and that's where we get these numbers. So these numbers are from May eleventh, when we would have shut water off. So yeah, the snapshot, previously, we've been holding right around twenty-five thousand, you can see we're starting to get elevated. If you look, I know this is more than the first quarter, but if you look at the latest, we have, these numbers are starting to get up and that could be that the consumption, we did see higher consumption in March with the drier, drier weather going on. We did see some higher consumptions on people starting to water their lawns a little bit earlier this year. Pre-COVID, this number right here, so this number of customers, if we look even at the March twenty-fifth one, pre-COVID, we were running about thirty to thirty-five shut offs per month. We've been consistently at a hundred. April was actually a little bit lower at ninety, but it's usually been running over a hundred since COVID, where we would have shut those people off had we been optioned. So another another economic indicator for West Richland is our building activity. You can see that our single family permits, we've been reporting, we've all seen it, going out there, single family permits is significantly higher year over year. So this one shows the increase in that, this next slide also shows it in a little bit of a different manner.
Richard, Rick, excuse me, I didn't mean to interrupt here, Richard has his hand up, we'll go ahead and ask questions as we roll through it. I guess of the ninety or a hundred people who have shut the water off, do we know whether they're owners or renters?
I don't have that statistic on hand, no. Most of them are owners, like we're not letting renters necessarily sign in, but to service anymore. So some of them could have had like an owner occupant. Now, we do notify them, so we don't just create this list and stop. We actually go through a process of contacting, if it is a, if it is a landlord, we'll reach out to the owner of the property. If, at any case, let them know, like you're behind, is there anything we can do? We'll try to set up a payment plan, we'll try to work with them, we'll try to, you know, help them find whatever source that we have available. We don't have a lot in water utilities. You'll hear the federal funding has utility support for customers. From what we've gone through and researched, a lot of that does not pertain to water sewer utilities, it is pertaining to electrical utilities. So a lot of that has not been available to our water customers. Benton, Benton R E A probably is seeing some of it on their end, but we have not.
Thank you.
So this is just another graph, kind of looking historically, year over year, where we're doing. You'll see that twenty-one, our single family is doing really well, where the blue column is the total year. So one of the things that, and I've talked about this previously, when we're viewing these, is to consider, is not just how we're doing year over year, but how are we doing compared to what we budgeted? So here's kind of a graph, which senior staff has seen some of, this is what the finance department has been working on, is creating, how are we doing compared to the budget? So when we built the budget, we were assuming three point four-six on average, single family permits per week. So we took that and graphed it and then we've been monitoring where we're at. You'll notice a little bit of a discrepancy here on our graph, we say a hundred and eight for March, I think the previous one had a hundred and eleven. Well, this was the last full week of March that we took, so there was a couple, a couple days in March that we, that ended in a week of April, so I think there was like three permits on those beginning week. So that's the little bit of discrepancy, but this is really going to help us monitor and for us to show you where we compare the budget, because honestly, I, I don't think we've budgeted this far, this many single family units in previous years, so that's important to remember when we're looking at this year-over-year information. Well, we actually did build a budget that was more single family permits and higher permit revenue. So we'll, you'll be seeing more of these as we go along throughout the year and we get more of this developed to share. So this is where as, as far as general fund goes, so this is where the money is coming from, primarily taxes, so utility tax, property tax and sales tax. Sales tax, well, all revenues increased thirty-two percent compared to two thousand and twenty. Sales tax was an eighteen percent increase and as you see the building activity, we saw even bigger increases for building permit fees as well as most of that is planner view fees in the charges for services. And here's just some more categories to see where we're seeing it. Usually property tax, you'll see, we don't usually see property tax until the second and fourth quarter of the year, so that'll be one to watch for the next quarter. But this is just kind of gauging, so the green one here is what we projected or what we budgeted for the two years. And then we're comparing it, the blue one is two thousand and twenty, same time period and then January to March of two thousand and twenty-one is the red one that we're comparing to. This is a sales tax, eighteen percent increase. We'll go to this next one, you'll see the eighteen down here. One of the interesting ones here is this construction one actually went down significantly as, but we saw an increase in retail, pretty significant dollars. One of the ideas behind this, which I talked to Richard earlier about, was the type of builder that we have going on, the type of building. So we're seeing the sales tax come in from a retail vendor rather than from this construction company charging the homeowner. So you're seeing, you know, the lumbermen's, the builder's first choice, the Home Depots, like all of that building comes through retail rather than construction. We're also seeing a significant increase in the online retailers. People staying home, ordering in, and that's where we're seeing the biggest, but overall eighteen percent compared to the county, which saw fifteen percent, so we're right in line, we're doing well there. Here's kind of that, how are we doing against we, how we budgeted? You can see that we're above here as well, maybe not quite as much in the, as the building area, but still doing pretty well. Utility taxes, we did see some in decrease in utility ta- in the electrical and then we've continued year over year, which almost has become a joke, is the telephone utility taxes dwindling every day as people switch to internet-based telephone, internet cannot be taxed. We're probably see the same trait with cable utility tax, we're not quite there yet, but we will be, that'll be the next one to monitor as everybody moves towards the apps and using the internet for their TV. Property tax, as I said, usually we see the second and the fourth quarter, so we are eleven percent over for quarter one than where we were in the previous years. But that'll be something we report and pay attention to more next quarter. Intergovernmental revenue, we're actually doing pretty well here, it's not high dollars, but even the state came out with their new budget and it didn't look like we were going to be seeing any cuts here, so this is going to be sustainable and we should be able to increase this. Expenditures. This is where all your general fund money goes, mostly to the police is our number one and then public works and parks is number two. Here's kind of a departmental on how we compare, so the green one again is the total budget for the year. The red one is two thousand and twenty-one and blue is two thousand and twenty, so most of them are right in line. The police got excited and ordered a bunch of vehicles, so they're a little bit more, but that'll flatten out because it was one-time purchases. So special revenue funds. Those are going to be your street fund, your park impact fund, criminal justice and library funds, they're all saying with the street fund is seeing the motor vehicle fuel tax source is down, that will be monitored and we'll probably be trying to work out a way around that in the future, but as people stay home and work, they're not driving their cars we're not seeing the fuel tax, which is our main source of street fund. Park impact, that has a lot to do with the building activity that's going on and that is up significantly like the rest of our building. Criminal justice is up, a lot of it's sales tax based and population based, it's up right along, pretty even with what we expected. And then the library fund is tied directly to the property tax that we saw in the general fund, it's very similar, so we saw that up eleven percent in the general fund, ten percent for library fund. Special revenue funds for expenditures. Not, not much exciting, we have dipped the street fund and not spent as much, we were lucky with the snow earlier this year and didn't have too much, so that has helped. And then these others are pretty consistent with where we expect to be. So capital project funds, so that's mainly your REIT one and two. We have the police facility in here as well as three fifty-five, the, probably the top three that we need to pay attention to are three oh one, three oh two and three fifty-five. So you can see here as far as revenues go, we're pretty even, I don't know what, how, I think we got some state share in the three oh two last year in, not this year, these, you should almost always be equal, what you see this year is good. These are doing well compared to previous years, we'll see that a little bit. And then the street fund is going to be the transportation improvement, which is going to be the transportation impact fees, again, comes along with construction. So here's REIT one and two is up eight percent compared to last year, so if you take the bottom blue over here. Transportation impact fees, again, significant increase, a lot of that has to do with the police facility. In two thousand and twenty, at the end of the year last year, we did see tap a teal and the T LAC building paying into that and kind of it's a volatile source and it has directly to do with a lot of commercial activity is where the big ones are. Expenditures. Again, green is where the budget is, red is where we're at. And you'll see, here's the fun police station, not a lot spent last year, we're going to see this thing mostly be spent this year, but that's what capital project funds do. And then REIT three oh one and three oh two, we haven't had a lot of activity in those yet either. Those will be projects coming down the pipeline that I'm sure Roscoe has already talked about. Utility funds and revenues. Most of these, so we have water collection, sewer collection, storm water and some irrigation. Almost all of these are consistently a single-digit percentage increase, a lot of it has to do with the increase in the, the rate. And water did see a little bit because of the hydrant, so there's the water irrigation, you'll see about the same, a six percent increase. Stormwater, another six percent and solid waste is a five percent. Expenditures, these are operating funds are pretty consistent, we are seeing some slightly more water and, I don't know, I kind of talked to Richard Robb a point of how things are costing more and so we may see some of these costs go up as well, because I know that the cost of just, I think I used gloves as an example, like P P E stuff, cost of things is going up, so I'll be something to monitor and watch. And that concludes my presentation, are there any questions?
Thank you, Erin, I see Mayor Proton break.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Finance Director Gwen, I just wanted to kind of follow up on the question that Councilmember Bloom asked a little bit earlier with regard to the past due utility water accounts. Mentioned several mitigation steps, I guess, payment plans that have been talked about with customers that are delinquent, notifying customers or owners. Do you have any feel for how successful those have been or has there been any takers? Just curious.
We've had a few takers on them and some of them have helped significantly. My concern obviously is if they're behind and then you're adding, so if you say, I'm going to spread this, you know, I own, I owe a hundred and twenty dollars, let's say. And we tried to say, okay, well, we're just going to add ten dollars to your bill for the next twelve months, well, they're already struggling making that. And so we have had a few defaults for that. But some of, I mean, I would say about fifty percent of them, which there haven't been many, I'd say under ten, have stuck with it and actually it's helped them pay it off.
Okay.
The ones I would be the most concerned about are, if you look at the end of that chart, the fourteen, and I can pull it up, but it's the ones that are a hundred and fifty-seven days plus behind because those are the ones that are probably once the moratorium ends, they are going to struggle to make that payment and their water will get shut off, so the goal is to try to find something that helps them out. I know there has been some charities that have helped, there's been some individuals that have walked in and said, I want to pay somebody's bill and some, it has helped some of them. But again, we've reached out and a lot of those longevity ones are non-responsive either. We leave door tags, we make phone calls, we send letters, trying to find what we can do to help or if we can get them in touch with someone, like I know West Richland Community Care Foundation paid off some of those. We've had some other individuals as well.
Okay, I, I appreciate that detailed information, thank you and very good presentation as well.
Thank you.
Anyone else, questions to Erin this evening? Well, even given COVID last year, City of West Richland is in good financial position, unlike our sister cities that have other challenges with hotel motel tax and different things and tourism that they suffer a loss from. So I guess we can be, count ourselves fortunate to not be in that position. Those cities are looking at cutting different programs and positions to make ends meet. So we're going the right direction and look forward to a successful year as we emerge from this pandemic. Thank you, Erin, very good, I appreciate your report this evening.
You're welcome.
Council, the consent agenda is now before you, which includes approved payment of the bills, approve the minutes of the regular meeting, May fourth, two thousand and twenty-one. Motion to authorize the mayor to execute agreement between City of West Richland, Lawrence Hospital, LLC. Motion to authorize the mayor to execute agreement between city of West Richland, the large hospital LLC. Mental health professionals. Resolution sixteen twenty one, setting a public hearing date for the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty seven transportation improvement program. Motion authorizing the mayor to execute amend addendum number two to the metro interlocal agreement. Motion authorizing the mayor to execute amendment to the terms of the purchase and sale agreement for the old police station building. Resolution seventeen twenty one, setting a public caring date for utilities vacation. Resolution eighteen twenty one, amending and the adopted city council rules of procedure and conduct. Motion authorizing the mayor to execute lease agreement with format. And ordinance sixteen twenty one, designating rent revenue from format lease to park maintenance. So anyone from the audience would like to speak to the consent agenda this evening? If so, please raise your virtual hand or star nine. If you are by phone.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
So I think you missed the amended, the addition of amending the meeting minutes from March sixteenth. That was added. Today to the agenda.
My apologies, the council you saw. Email come to you amending the meeting minutes, the. It's the title company for the sales and purchase agreement of the properties for. It was Hapo, was it not? They needed to have specific dates and dollar amounts listed in the minutes for their records. So that was an add change to the meeting or to the consent agenda from the meeting minutes. Thank you, Stephanie. So anyone from the audience would like to speak to the consent agenda this evening? I see no one, Stephanie. Counsel, all in favor of the consent agenda by saying aye?
We don't have a motion yet.
Need a motion, I guess.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
All right, motion second, and we made the amendment to that minute meeting there, it got me going backwards, so all in favor, say aye. Oppose like sign. Motion carried, thank you, counsel, appreciate it. Moving on to seven A is the resolution adopting a new policy and procedure for reviewing. Adopting proclamation and keys to the city. This is brought forth by Stephanie proposes adoption. To improve our current procedures and policies, so without all ask her to present a staff report decision.
Thank you. And so although the city doesn't receive a lot of proclamation requests. It is important to have a policy in place for the review and adoption of proclamations. And with this proposed policy, after an application is received by the clerk's office. It's reviewed by the mayor. And then the proclamation would go before the city council for approval via resolution on the following meetings consent agenda. And so the council would have the opportunity to pull it if they are not in agreement with. Adopting that proclamation. And then this also gives the applicant the opportunity to have that proclamation formally presented during a council meeting. Which I think is something that's lacking currently is that we issue these proclamations, but it kinda like there's not a lot of promotion for them. So the policy also outlines the same process for awarding keys to the city if the city ever wishes to. Award. One of those, but it already. Allows that policy to already be in place, so.
Thanks, Stephanie, is there anyone from the audience who would like to speak to this resolution this evening? If so, raise your virtual hand or star nine by phone. I see no one, Stephanie, do you see anyone?
Do not.
May I motion, please?
I move approve resolution nineteen twenty one, a resolution of the city of West Richland, adopting policies and procedures.
I thought you stopped for a minute.
Well, I. I couldn't read it anymore. Govering, oh governing proclamations and keys to the city.
All right, we had a motion and we had the second. Okay, that was Gail. Any questions, conversation, likes yourself, comments, counsel?
I have a comment.
Mr. Bloom.
Yeah, how many keys are we gonna make? That's all.
One big one for you. Councilmember Moran.
Thank you, I just wanna say thank you Stephanie for making this, this was something that I reached when I was helping somebody. They're trying to create a proclamation and this is exactly what we need, we needed to have something that we could follow. For the future use, so thank you very much for working on this, it looks great.
All right, no other comments, council, all in favor, say aye. Close like sign, motion carried, thank you, counsel. We do not have any unfinished business this evening or any new business, so this is a time that we open for citizen public comment. Anyone who would like to address counsel, please raise your virtual hand or star nine if you're by phone. And Stephanie will unmute you and our recognition. Stephanie, do you see anyone this evening?
I do not.
Okay, and just to share with the. Audience that's out there this evening, one of the amendments that was made this evening to our policies is we're gonna be changing to. Public comment session at the beginning of the meeting and one at the end of the meeting. As we discussed at the last council meeting, so. Give people an opportunity to speak and if they don't wanna sit through the whole meeting, they can go ahead and leave. Or if they wanna stick around, they can make comments a couple of times, but I think it's gonna give people a better opportunity to participate. Be heard without having to sit through that sometimes to our meeting. But this one looks like we're gonna get it done in record time for the last couple of months, so looking forward to that. All right, counsel, with that, we'll move on to staff and council reports, staff. I see Chief Majetic has his hand up, sir, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and by the way, you cursed us about the being a fast meeting, thank you for that.
You're speaking, that's right, I forgot, Roscoe, get the clock going.
So first, I'd like to provide counsel and ladies and gentlemen of the audience that the police facility. Is on track still, if you've driven by the construction site using great strides and advancement as far as walls going up and roofing. And knock on wood, the project is on time and on budget and in large part that's thanks to Public Works, not only Roscoe. But especially Drew Woodrop, I cannot stop singing the praises. Drew Woodrop and William, as far as the work that they put into this project to keep it going. Like it has been, so so far, so good, hopefully we'll have some walls up and a roof completely. Enough to where we can give, provide counsel or I told all counsel a quick tour, that's probably about a couple of months out still. Because we wanna make sure we can show you something of substance, but it's moved right along. And lastly, Mr. Mayor, the governor did sign the majority of the police reform legislation that was passed. This last legislative session. I'm not gonna say it's good news, that's my personal opinion. But it is what it is, it's become law, I'll be bringing the council, next council meeting, I believe. June first. The some, one of the first items to address some of these mandates that the state has laid at the municipality's feet. Which has a dollar tag. A dollar price attached to it, which is unfortunate. And but apparently of no regard to the state legislature. And council will be seeing that first meeting of June. Pretty much along the lines that I have been informing them of leading up to this, so. It is what it is, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, chief, and yes, that that leads the city to pick up the tab for legislative decisions. An unfunded mandate, so we get to pay the bill of their decisions and some of them. Are controversial at best. Thank you, chief. Eric, evening, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, this week is filing week for elections, so I wanted to just bring up some information on political signs. So if you are filing and it's going to be a candidate, you will find in the twenty twenty one candidate handbook. On page eighteen, details about what is allowed for political signs in the city of West Richland. If that doesn't suffice, you can head out to our website and find our municipal code. And go to chapter nineteen twelve, section zero nine zero, and you will find the same information there. As far as what is allowed for political signs within the city of West Richland. So I hope that helps out and provides information to the candidates and. And good luck all.
Thank you, Eric. Mr. Slade.
Thank you, Mayor, so counsel I sent out back in May tenth, an email talking about a whole bunch of grant opportunities. Congress has been very busy printing money for all sorts of programs and. I'm just glad we've got. David at Tridec, John and Daven at the Council of Government. And our representatives for Senator Murray's and Cantwell's and New House's. Shooting emails and letting us know about this. It's a little tough. To get a email that says submit your projects on our form with letters of support, and oh, by the way, we need it by Friday and you're getting that. You know, Monday morning, so it's been a little hectic, so you've got the update, so we did submit to New House. For what they, what used to be a. Used to be called earmarks, but those kind of fell out of, you know, favor about a decade ago, so now they're called community projects. And so we had submitted. To fund our bombing range, Keen Road intersection, it was not successful, and I provided the link so you can see the projects that. U.S. Representative New House selected, and I gotta say, he picked some good projects. That typically wouldn't get funded, there's not, some of those projects don't have mechanisms to get funded, so I didn't feel too bad. Then we've got. Senator Murray's office. Asking for information, we'd submit some waterline replacement and some wetland restoration, Eric submitted that one. And found out that that was just a, she sits on the appropriations committee back in DC. As a, I think she's the ranking Democratic member on the committee, so. And we thought that was for applying towards a program, turns out that no, the committee was trying to decide how much money they were gonna print in DC. For these different programs, and so. We got a subsequent email and so that had more information. And different forms to fill out, so we ended up filling out. Public Works filled out three. Projects, Eric filled out another one there for community development, so. Again, Senator Murray had. Community projects or congressional earmarks, and we had submitted for the Keen Road Wetland. Waterline replacement. Bombing Range Road, Keen Road Intersection, again, these were capped on the at two and a half million. And then the other one was well number two, and so that was a one we threw together in a week based on information, preliminary information received from our consultant. On well two, once I get the formal memo, I'll I'll brief counsel, but basically. The consultants after the pump test and looking at the wells, not recommending throwing hundreds of thousands of dollars at that well. Recommending a re, redrill, redrilling well. And gives us opportunity to get rid of the chlorine gas there, so I'll brief the utility committee, once I've had that memo and then that'll come back to council. But I took the opportunity to go throw that in the hat and see if we can get some federal money. Those same projects then were submitted to Senator Murray's office for the twenty twenty two non-defense appropriations bill. So we cranked out between both departments, eight of these applications and got them in before the. May fourteenth deadline. And so those are in, I don't know when we'll hear back from them, like I said, New House's office was pretty quick about getting that posted on the website. Today, we've got emails from. A U.S. Senator Cantwell's office asking again for submission to community projects and the appropriations bill. So these same four projects will be putting these eight applications together and getting those submitted by the. June first deadline, so. Gives us two weeks and I haven't looked at the form, I'm hoping that they got the same form, asking for the same information, but. We'll get those cranked out. The other stuff that's going on. Is we gotta call. Our information that the Public Works Trust Fund, the state's budget, actually put funding in the Public Works Trust Fund. And so we're gonna be looking at putting an application to get together on that for well two. That's due in July ninth, that one will come to council, like I said, typically. When we're going out for grants or loans, we want this to come to a council to take a look at it. But with these quick turnarounds, I just haven't had time to bring that forward, so I'd use the email. I figure I'll ask for forgiveness, if we end up getting something you don't want it, then we can always turn it down, you know, so no harm, no foul there. But I think Public Works Trust Fund's got about a hundred and ten thousand, hundred and eighteen, I can't remember the exact amount. Which is great, they haven't had funding in probably the last eight years, you recall back in twenty thirteen, the state swept it into the education budget. And so we ended up having an education funding problem and. Public Works infrastructure funding problem. T I B, the Transportation Improvement Boards, they've got money for projects too. And so we'll be doing a webinar with them on June first, typically those applications are due in August, so. A lot of grant writing and putting these projects together. And letters of support, so we've we've got a pretty good team to crank these out and. And what's been nice, Department of Health, Ecology, our local Chamber of Commerce, our Fire Department. Even the city of Richland, they've all been very helpful in getting us letters of support turned around in a week to get these things submitted, so. I think everybody's in the same boat, so anyway, stay tuned to that, the other one that's. Still pending, we learned from Senator Murray's office that they're working on another bill that would fund water infrastructure. And don't know the details of that or price, you know, or, you know. What's eligible or not. But stay tuned, there, like I said, there is a lot of money coming out of DC and. It's going somewhere, so figured West Richland would be a good spot for it. And then I did get a question, I'll just let you know that. This federal funding for water, we can't use it to treat aesthetic issues, so the treatment of iron and manganese is not an eligible cost. They're looking for stuff that. That you have drinking water quality, so you've got lead, you get arsenic in your water, that's the things they're looking for, not aesthetics, so. Tried, so we'll keep looking and keep researching for options for there. But that's all I had tonight, thanks, Mayor.
Thanks, Roscoe, good information, thank your team for busting out those, those applications. A lot in a short time, the stellar crew over there, hopefully we can snag some of that money. Okay, counsel, any comments this evening? Counselor Bloom.
Last week I was down in Henderson at my place, I had to do some. Medical work down there. And I took the opportunity to meet with the. Chairman of the local transportation board down there to get some insight of how they work. Because it's similar arrangement, it's been Franklin Transit Board. And she happens to be the the current mayor of the city of Henderson where my property is located. We had a nice discussion with her and her Public Works Director. It's kinda interesting, the difference in funding for transit there forces the transit. Projects and they're they're facing the same discussion we just had of all these grant requests and. But it's all integrated in into the Metropolitan Transportation District, you know, the. The Ben Franklin cog. Would be the equivalent for this and. My thought in mind is that. The transit at operation is much more integrated into the city because. my thought mind is that the transit operation is much more integrated into the city because every time a budget change happens with transit, it also goes to the city councils because the city councils are the ones that fund it. But so we're in a relatively unique situation where you know, as you're, as the city's representative to the transit board, we're sharing that property, that sales tax money. But as a, as a entity, the city council doesn't really have any input into how it's being spent. So it, it, it kind of makes it a unique situation. I want to look and see how Spokane is actually handling it because I believe it's set up a little bit more directly on a sales tax approach. But you know, I, I think with the, the expansion of transit in the area and expansion of the area, the cities need to be a little bit, get a little bit more involved in actually what's going on and from a standpoint of a technical review of the proposals and things of that nature. But that's just my viewpoint, lessons learned out of the interaction.
Is that controlled by the bylaws of Ben Franklin Transit? How they've got it inked as far as their, their structure, Richard?
Well, no, the, the structure is identical to what it is for the, for the board. The structure is identical to what it is down in Las Vegas.
So it's the board, it's the board that would give the authorities to the cities to be a participant in decision making as far as funding sources and directions?
Well, well, no, it's, it's, it's from the standpoint of where the funding is coming from. The, the board has to get its funding from the city or the county or the state. And so, and then the projects are a little bit more integrated.
You and I've had some conversations with the challenges you have as the chair over there, so I'd be more than happy to sit down with you and have further discussions to better understand your conversation you had. Maybe come up with some ideas.
Okay.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Council member Moran?
Thank you very much. I would first like to thank Eric for the information about the signs. It is campaign season and I know that if there is one thing I despise about campaign season, it's all of the signs and all the laws that are associated with them. So that is excellent that it's in the candidate's handbook. I know some folks that are running that might need to look at that. I also would like to thank everybody so far that has filed to run. I hope to see some faces that are on here right now filing again because I would like to see everybody back. And yeah, so we have until Friday at the end of the day for that filing. And I would also like to say that, well, as far as scheduling goes, this Friday, there is the Benton Franklin Economic Development District and the Benton Franklin Council of Governments meetings that are gonna happen on this Friday. So stay tuned for those notes at our next meeting from what happens there. I do have a question actually that I thought of that, and actually, Richard, you probably are the better one to answer this. I'm wondering, those that have beehives currently, I know that they're starting to to spray for mosquitoes. If somebody has a beehive, how would they be able to contact the mosquito facility, district? Management?
Oh, they call mosquito control and tell them they have a beehive, but in general, mosquito control, unless they are in an area where we fog and, and the, the way mosquito control does fogging is they only do it at night after the bees return to the hive.
Right.
But it, it, it's intended to be protective of the mosquitoes, but they will, they will, you know, there are some areas where they just don't you know, they've already been contacted by the hive owners and they stay away from them and they provide them what's called a barrier spray around the property.
Okay, so anybody that does have a beehive, if you would like to contact them, just to let them know so that they can make sure to not fog in that area if possible and help with a
And they can provide more information for beekeepers, et cetera. I believe there is information on the Benton mosquito control website.
Okay.
Discussion.
Perfect. Thank you.
I'll come back that, that, you know, like, like previous years, if, if I put signs out, it will be a where's Waldo? And so we'll see who, who can find my side.
Excellent. Something also regarding signs that I would like to mention, just so that everybody is aware and the public is aware, if a sign is on public or private property, you cannot damage this sign or move this sign unless it is your specific sign or your specific property. So please don't damage signs or take signs if it is not your sign or your property. Thank you.
Okay, good. Mayor Proton, break, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick announcement for the benefit of my fellow council members and the public. I've served on the state's Emergency Management Council for the last two years. I was reappointed last week by Major General Dougherty and also the AWC to continue representing the Association of Washington City on that council. And I'm pleased to mention that Phil Lemley, fellow council member in Richland, was also reappointed to serve as the alternate. So I'm looking forward to continuing to work with the governor and Major General Dougherty on matters dealing with state and local emergency management. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mayor. Proton, break. And thank you for your services there. Much appreciated. All right, so as everybody's aware, May fourteenth, the governor announced moving all the counties to phase three. Quite surprising. We didn't expect to hear that. And the opening, full reopening of the state anticipated June thirtieth. Obviously with a goal set at seventy percent of the state being fully vaccinated. At this point in time, the state has currently about fifty-seven percent vaccination rate. So that's, that's a promising sign. The west side's actually doing us a favor because here in Benton County, we're at only forty-five percent and thirty-seven percent in Franklin County. So we're actually picking a benefit up from the west side to do this whole COVID thing for this opening. We had staff meetings and, and went through the process of putting together a re, the reopening plan here. Unfortunately, the governor never gives us any advance notice, so we have to gather all the information that we previously assembled, getting ready for what his announcements are and pick and choose what's gonna fit the best for his, his plan moving forward. So I, I sent her an announcement out that the city will reopen to the public July sixth. This would give all employees that are not fully vaccinated the adequate time if they chose to take advantage of that to become vaccinated. Because at that point in time with fully vaccinated employees, we do not have to mask as fully vaccinated. If you are not vaccinated, you will be required to mask. As the staff communicates with any public member or the public in general, they will be required to wear masks. If we have somebody go out, maybe at a water call for a blowout of a water line, they will mask, fleece or masking when they make contact with, with the public. So any public contact will require masking. We will also continue to provide the PPE for the individuals who are not fully vaccinated. Another thing that came up is the Open Public Meetings Act. The legislators, legislation this year has adopted the, the OPMA to follow the emergency order. And while the governor is intended to opening June thirtieth, he's not lifting the, the emergency order. The emergency order will still be in place, which means at any time he can jerk us back into a phasing or a new plan if he sees fit. And with that said, with the emergency order still being in place, OPMA also would be in place. So based on our lack of the technology to virtual, which will allow both in-person and virtual meetings, we will be continuing the Zoom meetings until the emergency order is lifted. So that's just FYI for everybody as to what the status is moving forward. I'll go ahead and ask Stephanie to send out the email that I sent to all employees for your review, so you can do that. So moving forward, moving in the right direction and everybody seems to be getting excited about it, but gotta remember what got us here. Good hygiene, wash your hands, get vaccinated and any other precautions you can think of. But it's, it's nice to know that we actually walked through the hallways here and then and the vaccinated people look at someone, oh, I didn't recognize you. Get the big black mask on. So that's the status we're at with that. And I see Councilmember Moran, you have your hand up?
I just had a quick question about that. I know that it's something that I've asked before, so it's not a gotcha. When it comes to that technology, seeing as more CARES money is being provided for, in general, and doesn't have to be specifically for technology, are we looking at using some of that technology to make sure that when we are able to meet in person, that we have the possibility of having hybrid meetings? Because even after COVID, I think that folks have really found it beneficial to either remotely participate or watch after the fact in video rather than just listen to all the audio, which is a bit more difficult to follow. Is there plans in the future? Because that's something I know I've been pushing for and hope we can get it.
Yeah, no, that's, that's, that's a great question. And when this whole pandemic started and funding sources started rolling in, those, that was something that we have looked at, we are continuing to look at. We're looking at different technology as this pandemic has, has come to fruition. There's a lot of different options that are out there. So yes, that is something that I feel would be a necessity because the new normal is gonna be what we're doing right now. Virtual, I think, is gonna be here in a lot of different ways and, and we have to be ready for it. With this, the original first round of CARES funds, there wasn't funds available in that package. The significant more dollar amount that's coming this way from the federal side of things could certainly give us that opportunity. And yes, that is, that is something that is a goal of mine to get to the point of when we go back to the new normal will be set up for both sides of the fence.
Excellent. Thank you very much. I am looking forward to that. I, I hate to say silver lining when it comes to COVID, but kind of a silver lining that we are learning how to do this virtual and allow more people to participate. So thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else this evening? All right. Seeing no one, we'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting at seven oh two. Everybody have a nice evening. Enjoy the weather. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.